At six o'clock here at the senior center. So what we typically do is we'll first rise, pledge allegiance to our flag, we'll then have a moment of silence for our veterans. Clerk will call the roll to ensure that we have a quorum sufficient to meet this evening, and then we'll get into tonight's agenda, which consists of approval of minutes, public comment, report from the superintendent, subcommittee reports, motions and resolutions, personal privilege, and then we'll move adjournment. So if there's no questions, I'd ask everyone to please rise, salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. We'll now have our clerk call the roll.
May I question, sir?
Here.
Ms. Beardsley?
Here.
Ms. Boardnarrow?
Here.
Mr. Drummy?
Here.
Mr. Froyer?
Yeah.
Ms. Ayavino?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Spatafora?
Here.
Superintendent O'Terry?
Here.
Student representative, Tom?
Yeah.
So we have a quorum sufficient to conduct business. We'll now get into this evening's agenda. First, approval of minutes, regular session, December 17th, 2018. Motion by Mr. Ayavino, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Everybody's had a chance to look the minutes over. Any questions? Chair has none. All those who favor say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. The regular session minutes are adopted unanimously. Now the executive session minutes from December 17th, 2018. Motion by Ms. Spatafora, seconded by Mr. Drummy. Any questions on those minutes? Hearing none. All those who favor say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. The executive session minutes of December 17th, 2018 are adopted unanimously. We're now at item number two, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee by approaching the podium. Please just state your name and address for the record. And we ask that you please keep your remarks to a minimum. So with that being said, public comment is now open. Anybody wishing to address the school committee can do so now. Okay, hearing none. We wish you all a happy new year then, and we'll now move on to item number three. This is the superintendent's report, and this is where our school superintendent updates the school committee as to what's been happening in the district since our last meeting. So without further ado, let me go to Superintendent O'Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. First order on my report tonight is the Nature's Classroom Field Trip for the Salemwood School. Principal Van Nguyen, and I'm going to call up Jane Wright and Sarah Strayer to talk about the proposed field trip in March to Nature's Classroom in Charlton, Massachusetts. I'd like to call them up to the podium to provide some details on that. And I believe they brought some guests, some compelling speakers.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Sarah Strayer, and I'm a sixth grade teacher at the Salemwood School. Our annual four-day, three-night field trip to one of the Nature's Classroom sites is the highlight of our year for our sixth graders who choose to participate, and we teachers encourage as many students as possible to be a part of this experience. The curriculum at Nature's Classroom encourages children to be environmentally conscious, provides captivating, authentic, hands-on experiences, and promotes being an active part of a cooperative community. It has been a pleasure to chaperone this trip for 14 consecutive years, watching my students experience this program with their friends, and then come back and tell their other friends about it. The sixth grade staff at the Salemwood School would like to ask your permission to take our students to Nature's Classroom in March of 2019. Thank you for your time and consideration. Happy New Year's 2018.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to, just otherwise we could take questions.
So we are going this year, March 18th through the 22nd. We are going back to Charlton, Mass, where we went last year. We have two students from the seventh grade who went last year, and invite them up just please.
Okay, welcome.
Hi.
Can you just state your name?
My name is Bosma Orich.
And my name is Sabrina Cronfall.
Good, welcome.
Why don't you tell them your favorite part of camp?
So my favorite part about the camp was probably the night hikes and the times we went hiking, and also the food. Like, yeah, it was really good, and the whole process of our lunches, breakfast, and dinner. Like, it taught us how to compose our food, and how, like, we can, like, reuse some of it, and how not to throw all of it out.
Okay.
My favorite part was probably the classes we had, because we got to experience new things, like dissecting, and going, like, through the woods, and, like, learning what the animals and the plants, what they are. And I really enjoyed the food, too. And, like Bosma said, had to reuse our food and compose them, so, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, let's, if it's okay, Superintendent, we can open it up for questions. I presume you're recommending.
Yes, I recommend this very highly. I think it's an incredibly enriching educational experience. I think our two veterans who were there last year have articulated some of the very reasons, you know, not just the fact that it is very hands-on. I think that they learn ecosystems, the whole cycle of plants, what they can be used for. But I think one of the things that they're describing that we often overlook, it's a very good team-building exercise, and I think, I know our educators would agree with that. I think it's one of those opportunities where kids are learning, and they don't realize how much they're learning, and much of what they take back of it isn't necessarily in the classroom, but on the experience itself.
Great. Well, there you have it. So now it's on the school committee. Let's take some questions. First, Ms. Boardnarrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question, this is the most important question. What kind of food did you have?
It was like, we had a lot of food. Like, breakfast, we would have cereal, waffles, and French toast. Lunches, we would have tacos, chicken, pizza, and like, for dinner, we'd have spaghetti, pasta. And then after, we'd have dessert. It would be, like, sometimes cookies, or churros, ice cream, and et cetera.
That sounds good. I'm a big foodie, so I might have to come on this adventure. Another question, perhaps one of you all could answer this. So it looks like you started fundraising already. Do you anticipate that the cost will decrease?
So, yes, we have, and students who participated in that fundraising, it's decreased from their own account. We have also applied for a grant, which we have received the past few years. We have not heard from them yet, but last year, every student, their cost was decreased by almost $100.
Awesome.
And we were able to add additional help to students, to families that need it. So there is still the possibility of decreasing the amount for everyone. So we might have another fundraiser, we have open gyms, we're discussing another catalog sale, but we are hoping to receive the grant that has been so generous in the past.
Awesome. And will you let us know when those fundraising events are?
Of course.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boardnarrow. We're going to go to Ms. Beardsley, and then to Ms. Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, because I was a science teacher, it's like I was saying before, for the other school, thank you guys so much for doing this, because we know that it takes a lot from the teachers, and, right, and to give this opportunity to the students. So thank you, guys. And then the other thing is, I think it's great that, how many students are going? Do you know?
We don't know yet. Last year, we had over 80 percent. We're hoping for even more this year, so we're still working on increasing the numbers.
That's fabulous. And just from a, from a learning standpoint, I mean, I think it's fabulous, because you can't learn other things through, you know, experiential learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beardsley. Ms. Spatafora.
Thank you. Just a few questions. With it being in March, and being in New England, if we come across some inclement weather, major snowstorm is there, do we still go?
We still go.
Okay.
Prior years, we have been with snow past our knees.
Ms. Wright, could I just have you speak in the microphone?
Prior years, we've had snow past our knees, we've had six inches of ice, we've had below-zero weather. Other years, hopefully, it's a little nicer out, but we are out there regardless of this. Last year, they were there for a snowstorm. We had no school in Malden, but they were at Nature's Classroom.
And the kids have the proper attire?
Yes, and we send additional winter coats, gloves, mitts, boots, yes.
Okay. And then one other question, just on the paper we received, it said eligibility requirements, that a student must be present 90 percent of the days. Is this, these are unexcused absences, I'm assuming?
Correct, yes.
Excused absences don't count, so...
And it's from January to March. So the fall doesn't count.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I heard, I think I heard you guys say that there was an 80 percent attendance rate or something like that. So what is the chaperone ratio from a Delta student for this trip?
We hope to keep it at 12 to 1.
Okay.
So that's what it's been in the past.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just from the chair to the students, is there anything that you would change after your experience? More of something, less of something? You can't say longer.
I mean, I wouldn't change anything, because I think the experience was, like, perfect. We got to learn a lot of things, and overall, it was a great experience.
Okay. And yourself?
I agree with it. Yeah, I do hope, like, it was longer, but, and the thing is, that sometimes it would get a little cold in the rooms, so it would have been nicer if, like, we had a heater, or it would have been, because when you wake up, like, you're freezing.
Yeah, got it, got it, right. Hey, besides the food, tell me, why was the hikes your favorite, one of your favorite aspects of the experience?
I really liked the night hikes, because when you're over there, like, you'll be able to see all the stars, and we got to learn a lot about it. And we'd be hearing, like, owls and some new animals. And it was also, like, a great bonding experience with new people, because, like, you'd be hiking together, and, like, trying to help each other out, like, to see in the dark, because you can't see well. And, like, we would try new experiments, and it was really fun, so I really enjoyed it.
Okay, great. Ms. Strayer, could I have you back up? I'm not sure of Ms. Wright, but I heard you say 14 years straight?
14 consecutive years I've chaperoned this trip.
What's your secret? And it's just so impressive. 14 years straight, you said?
We, the teachers are doing most of the duty at night, and the Nature's Classroom staff is, they're running classes, they're running field trips during the day, and it's so much fun just to kind of walk around, you observe, you see what the kids are doing, you see them learning in a different way, and it's just fun to get to know them differently.
Got it, okay. All right, well, there you have it. So you've heard what they had to say? We'll entertain any motions. Motion by Mr. Drummy, seconded by Ms. Boardnarrow. Is everybody clear on what we're doing? This is a motion to approve. Correct, Mr. Drummy? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those who favor say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now back to the superintendent.
Sure, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Last spring, we implemented the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We partnered with the Institute for Community Health, who compiles that data, and they are here to do their presentation. We've partnered with them for the last couple of years on the YRBS project, and right now, I'd like to call upon Dr. Karen Finnegan and Emily Chason to come up and do the presentation. I think it will require us to take a step off of the dais here and into the audience so we can view this.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Karen Finnegan. I'm an epidemiologist at the Institute for Community Health. I'm here on behalf of my colleague Megan Hatch, as well as my other colleagues at Institute for Community Health, presenting this findings of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. As the superintendent mentioned, Malden Middle School and High School administered the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in March 2018 to students in grades seven and eight, and grades nine through 12. The survey asked the students questions about demographics, substance use, violence and safety, mental health, sexual health, physical health, and engagement. Institute for Community Health was responsible for data cleaning and analysis, and we followed the Centers for Disease Control's guidance around these procedures. In 2018, you can see in the dark green, there was a 68 percent participation rate at the high school, and an 82 percent participation rate here in blue amongst middle school students. We only present 2018 data for middle school students, because in previous years, we included the sixth graders in this survey, and they were excluded in the 2018 analysis. I'm going to start by talking about substance abuse, and begin by talking about lifetime use of alcohol, cigarettes, marijuana, and e-cigarettes among middle school and high school students by grade. As you can see, and as we would expect, use increases as students get older, and the trend is true across all substances. Current use of these substances is lower, and by current use, we asked students if they used these substances in the 30 days prior to the survey. And so you can see, only 5 percent of middle school students reported that they used alcohol in the five days preceding the survey, 1 percent reported binge alcohol, and 12 percent reported use of e-cigarettes. You can see how these numbers compare to previous years, 2013 and 2015, for these substances, except for e-cigarettes, which were first introduced to the survey in 2015. When we look at current use of alcohol, cigarettes, and marijuana among high school students, we see that over time, use has decreased. So among, looking at alcohol, we see that in 2007, 29 percent of high school students reported that they had had alcohol in the 30 days before the survey, and that number was down to 13 percent in 2018. We see a similar trend for binge alcohol and cigarettes. E-cigarettes, like in the middle school, has increased, and use was at 14 percent in the last 30 days. Marijuana is down slightly from 2014 and previous years. I'm going to, I'm going to turn now to violence and safety. When we look at the percentage of middle school students who were in a physical fight in the last 12 months, we see that 11 percent of students in 2018 reported that they were in a fight on school property in the last 12 months. The question when asked did not specify if this happened during school hours. And when we look at this question amongst high school students, in 2018, 5 percent of high school students reported that they had been in a physical fight on school property in the past 12 months. We asked students about their experience with bullying, both on school property and cyberbullying. Middle school students, in 2018, 18 percent of middle school students reported that they were bullied on school property. This is a decrease from previous years, and 10 percent reported that they were cyberbullied. In total, 22 percent of middle school students reported that they were bullied on school property or cyberbullied in 2018. And that's asking about bullying in the last 12 months. We see lower rates of bullying amongst high school students. 9 percent of high school students report that they were bullied on school property, 7 percent report that they were cyberbullied, and only 12 percent report that they were bullied on school property or cyberbullied in the last 12 months. In 2018, 8 percent of high school students reported that they did not go to school in the last 30 days because they felt unsafe. And when we asked students about sexual harassment, in middle school, we see that 6 percent of males and 12 percent of females report that they were sexually harassed at school in the last 12 months. Overall, 9 percent of Malden Middle School students report sexual harassment. We see a similar trend in high school students, where 6 percent of males and 14 percent of females report that they were sexually harassed at school in the last 12 months. 4 percent of males and 2 percent of females report that they were physically hurt by a date, and 3 percent of females report that they had sexual contact against their will ever, where 1 percent of males report this. Overall, 10 percent of high school students report that they were sexually harassed at school, 3 percent report that they were hurt by a date, and 2 percent report that they had sexual contact against their will. I'm going to turn now to mental health. And we first look at middle school students. This is the percentage of students who report that life is somewhat or very stressful, overall and by gender. In 2018, you see that 60 percent of middle school students report that life is somewhat or very stressful, and this number is slightly more than 50 percent, at 52 percent in males and 68 percent in females. In males, the numbers have increased over time, as they have in females, although females have been higher consistently across the years. When we look at mental health amongst high school students, we see that 73 percent of high school students report that they are somewhat or very stressed, and 65 percent of males in 2018 reported this, and 81 percent of females. School issues were the primary worry for both boys and girls, followed by appearance for middle school students and family issues for high school students. We asked students about their experience of depression and non-suicidal self-harm in the past 12 months, and 30 percent of students in the middle school reported that they experienced depression in the last 12 months, and 11 percent reported that they experienced non-suicidal self-harm. The percent reporting that they experienced depression has increased from 2013 and 2015, and has remained largely flat in non-suicidal self-harm. When we asked the same question of high school students, 28 percent report that they experienced depression in the last 12 months, a number that is consistent with previous years, and 10 percent report that they experienced non-suicidal self-harm, which is consistent with previous years as well. We asked middle school students about their, if they've seriously considered suicide or attempted suicide. 19 percent of females and 10 percent of males reported that they seriously considered it, and 3 percent and 2 percent respectively of students report that they actually attempted it. In the high school, we see that 10 percent of students report that they seriously considered suicide, and 5 percent reported that they actually attempted suicide. This is higher amongst females than males for both seriously considering and actually attempting. I want to put these numbers in context. We have the Malden numbers here in the lightest blue for both seriously considered and actually attempted amongst high school students. And when we look at 2017 data from surrounding communities, Somerville and Everett, as well as Massachusetts and the United States as a whole, you see that these numbers are largely consistent, and in fact, sometimes lower than surrounding communities. When we look at sexual health, we see that amongst high school students, 27 percent report in 2018 that they had sexual intercourse ever. This is a slight decrease from previous years, although an increase from 2016. And 18 percent report that they are currently engaging in sexual intercourse, which is consistent for the last few surveys. Sexual risk and risky sexual behavior have declined since 2012. We see that early initiation of sexual intercourse has declined to only 3 percent amongst high school students. 1 percent of students report having four or more sexual partners in the last three months, and 3 percent of students reported that they used drugs or alcohol prior to their last intercourse. When we ask students who are sexually active about the type of birth control that they use, we see that there's an increase in those who report that they've been using a prescribed method of birth control. 34 percent of high school students who are sexually active reported that they used prescribed birth control, which is an increase from previous years. 63 percent report that they use condoms at lax sexual intercourse, a slight decline from 2016, but certainly an increase from 2012 and 2014. And 27 percent of students report that they used an unreliable method at last intercourse. Unreliable method includes withdrawal, no method, or they're not sure of the method that they used. We look at sexting activity in the past 12 months among Malden High School students by grade, and we see that there's some variability in receiving and sending sexting messages. Ninth graders and 10th graders are the highest percentage of students who report receiving sexting messages, and 12th graders are the highest percentage, with 12 percent reporting that they have sent sexting messages. When we look at physical health, we see that amongst middle school students, 32 percent achieved five out of seven days of at least 60 minutes of physical activity in the week preceding the survey, and 16 percent of students were active for at least 60 minutes in seven out of seven days. These are slight decreases from previous years, but I do want to remind you that with all the middle school data, we're no longer including the sixth graders, so trends have to be interpreted with caution. Amongst high school students, we see that the numbers have largely remained consistent across the years. 38 percent of high school students report that they engaged in 60 minutes or more of physical activity on five out of seven days, and 14 percent of students say that they achieved this goal on seven out of seven days in the prior week. We asked students about their sleep on the previous nights, and 19 percent of middle school students in 2018 reported that they slept eight or more hours in a night. 49 percent reported six or seven hours, and then 33 percent of high school students reported that they slept for five or fewer hours each night. When we look at engagement, we think about screen time and how students spend their time. Amongst middle school students, we see that 58 percent of students report that they spend fewer than three hours per day on average on computers or TV on the average school day, and 55 percent of students in middle school report that they spend fewer than three hours texting or using social media on the average school day. Amongst high school students, it's 50 percent who report that they spend three or fewer hours on computers or TV with screens on the average school day. on computers or TV with screens on the average school day, and 56% say that they spend fewer than three hours texting or using social media on the average school day. And this excludes any computer use for assignments or schoolwork. Our key findings: overall, we find that the lifetime use of drugs increases with grades across all substances. We found that alcohol is the most common currently-used substance among high school students, and middle school students most often use e-cigarettes. Middle school students were more likely to be in a fight on school property than high school students, and 12% of high school students experienced bullying, either physical or cyber, compared to 22% of middle school students. 8% of students did not go to high school at least one day in the last 30 days due to feeling unsafe, which was an increase from 2016 where it was 5%. And girls were more likely to have experienced sexual harassment at school than boys for both high school and middle school students. Overall, the percentage of students who feel stressed has increased over time. Girls report higher overall stress than boys for both middle school and high school, and 30% of middle school students experienced depression in the past year. When we think about sexual health, the percentage of Malden high school students who ever had sexual intercourse increased slightly from 2016. However, indicators of sexual risk have decreased or remained low over time, and the use of prescribed birth control has increased. The use of condoms has decreased slightly, and the use of unreliable contraceptive methods has increased a bit from 2016 to 2018. And we see that sending sexting messages is most common in the 12th grade, while receiving sexting messages is most common in the 10th grade. We find that about 30% of middle school students and 38% of high school students are not meeting physical activity guidelines, and 59% or more of middle school and high school students are not meeting guidelines for sleep. However, more than 50% of students meet ideal screen time limits, and 55% of middle school students and 56% of high school students are spending fewer than three hours a day on social networking sites. I'm happy to take questions.
So what we'll first do is hear from the superintendent on his thoughts of what we just heard, and then we'll open it up for questions in general. Superintendent O'Teary.
Sure. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Finnegan and ICH for their compilation of this. We had several meetings with them prior to the presentation. I think what we take out of this is a great deal of information that can help drive some programming, some of the areas we need to focus on. I think overall, we felt many positives came out of this. I think we saw a decrease in some of the areas of concern, and some areas went up. So we are looking at ways in which we can best support our students and our families in this. I will be saying it in my report, but one of the things that's on the rise is the e-cigarettes and vaping. And on Wednesday, at the high school, we'll be having a forum on that with Senator Lewis and Maureen Busby, who is a public health expert and an expert in tobacco and e-cigarette abuse. So we are looking at some programming on that. I know we've got a number of social-emotional supports in the district that we're hoping will help drive some of these numbers down in the future, but we take this very seriously. This becomes a guide for us in our programming and some curriculum as well.
All right, great. Let's take some questions from the committee. Ms. Beardsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for doing this. I had a few questions. Why did you drop the sixth grade? Is there a reason why you took out the sixth graders?
It was a decision made by the school, I believe. This happened before we got the data. I'm not quite sure why they were omitted.
Just curious. And then, on the stress levels, that's what struck me the most, just the trend up. And I feel like, is that something I'm seeing across the country, but is that spike especially high for, I mean, in your opinion? Or is there something you think is contributing to it?
I think it's consistent with what we're seeing nationally, this general increase. I think the school issues are the number-one source of stress at both middle school and high school, and so that's something to be aware of, but it certainly mimics national trends.
Okay. And then, the last thing, is there a reason why it's three hours? I'm just, as a parent, I just thought, three hours seems like a lot to me, and I just didn't know if there's, is that something you just have stipulated as three hours? It'd just be interesting to know how many kids are on for one or two.
We do have it in a narrower bucket. For the purposes of this presentation, we've used a guideline, but I think there's a binder with a very lengthy report where you can find more nuanced information about screen use.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Beardsley. Other questions from the committee? Just from the chair, is it possible to show going forward comparisons against the state or other urban-like districts? I saw you did that on a couple, but is that possible moving forward?
I think we can certainly look into that. You are, Malden is slightly cutting-edge. All the data that I had before is 2017, so there's a bit of a lag for some of the other available data, but we can consider if there are other communities around the state or if it makes sense to do a 2017 comparison.
Okay. On the participation rate, that surprised me, I guess. Did it you?
I think it's a slightly uncomfortable survey. You know, I think that people are sometimes reluctant to sort of answer these questions that are probing about some private activities. I think that's sort of generally what we see with this type of survey, that there's that sort of participation rate.
That's the feedback you received?
Oh, from the school?
Like, did you happen to talk to any families on why they chose not to?
We didn't. That is the generally sort of talked about with the YRBS, that there are always kids who don't want to answer.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, if my memory is correct, I think we had a large increase of the number of families that opted out last year. So that was not necessarily unexpected, I think.
I was just curious why that, you think that might have been?
I think in number...
If you heard any feedback.
Nothing specific, other than when families did call to opt out, they just felt that they didn't want it on a couple or on the basis of religious grounds. Religious or cultural grounds, I think, that did opt out. And just some families felt that the questions were rather probing and did not want to introduce that to their student.
Got it, okay. I see a light. Come on, let me jump over to, did you want to add to that, Mr. Connerfree? Just to the mic?
Yep. Just quickly, as far as the participation rates for the high schools specifically, we did not have the entire senior class. They were either out on...
Internship.
Yeah, internship. Yeah, they were either out on internship, so it was about 400 people down.
So, Mr. Connerfree, do we have to readjust the time we do it next year?
I would say, when we do it in 2020, I would say, yeah, do it around the same time, because we did the middle school right after MCAS, March-ish, so...
Okay.
That skews the numbers just a little bit.
Okay. Let me jump around, okay? Let's go to Ms. Batafor.
Just to follow up on that, do we have a scheduled date for 2019 survey?
It's every two years.
Oh, it's every two years, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. And will we be posting these results on the Malden Public School website for parents? The presentation?
Yeah, we can put the presentation on the website. We also have a disc that's available in a binder as well.
Okay, thank you.
Let's hear from Representative Stump.
Thank you. So what I noticed in your key findings is that under mental health, girls report higher overall stress than boys in both middle school and high school. And I was trying to figure out, like, why that would be as a high school student, kind of wrapping my brain around that. But then I found in the previous slide that girls are more likely to have experienced sexual assault at school or harassment at school than boys in both high school and middle school. And do you think there's a correlation between the two? Do you think there's like a relationship between the two? Or were there any questions in the survey that may have linked the two?
I think that's a great question. There are certainly a lot of additional analyses that we could do with this data, and I think it's a really rich data source. We haven't explored if those two questions are related at all, but we see that, and then there are some other things around bullying and cyberbullying. There is the potential to really tease apart that question.
Anything else, Representative?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Just before we go back to our superintendent, was there anything else before we conclude with our superintendent that jumped out at you that we should be aware of?
I think specific results, no. I would say in general, you know, it's always easy to identify the gaps and talk about some of the negatives, but I think that Malden is a robust and healthy community, and these data are a way of helping to strengthen that.
Let me just ask, our superintendent has been leading the way on doing something about e-cigarettes, him along with State Senator Jason Lewis. What would be your advice to us, if you have any, on ways to counteract that? I mean, I know Somerville, the superintendent alerted me that Somerville now has banned the sale of the items from convenience stores. Is that right, Superintendent?
I believe that's their ordinance, yes.
I think, I don't feel equipped necessarily to make policy suggestions about that specific question. I think the data certainly reflect that Malden, like so many other communities, are seeing this huge increase in e-cigarettes. And we have some additional data that's in the much longer report that shows that students think e-cigarettes are much less dangerous than cigarettes, and they think that their parents and friends wouldn't necessarily approve, but that they still do it. But I think that that lack of recognition of the danger is an important factor.
Okay. Once again, on behalf of everyone, thank you very much for this info. Very helpful. Let's close it out with our superintendent.
Sure. I just, again, thank ICH for what they've done. In our discussions, we were specifically looking at a couple data points in our 2020 survey because of specific legislation and acts that have happened. We're talking, we really want to look at what the legalization of marijuana will do over these next two years. I think that's a substance that has been a bit, through the media and through its legalization, been downgraded to less harmful. I don't know if that's the correct term, but I think we want to look at that. Certainly, the increase in e-cigarette advertisement, and I think the fact that some of the data we're getting back that it is less harmful, that it's not a smoke, so it doesn't have the stigma or the connotation to lung cancer perhaps, but again, you know, when I hear a lot of it advertised on the radio, there is the warning on there that it does contain nicotine. I think also, it's important to note that this survey was done in March. A lot of the sexual harassment movement was in full swing, and I think it continues to unfold as people become more courageous and confident in coming forward. So I think those are three things that I know in our meetings with Mr. Connerfree, Mr. Strangelo, Dr. Chase, we looked at as we'd like to see what that entails. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is one that, I think if you look at the continuum over the last 15 or so years when it's been given, 12, 14 years ago, one of the concerns we had, especially with young boys, was steroid abuse. That has sort of fallen off, has not been as much of a concern, but, you know, also 15 years ago, we weren't concerned about texting, sexting, screen time, or e-cigarettes. So we need to watch these. I think these are all, in many ways, barometers of what is going on with our kids and what is going on with society. I do take Dr. Finnegan's compliment very seriously, and I think that the city and the school committee by extension sort as well that we are a robust and vibrant community that is dealing with these issues. Again, I think, when I look at the difference between a lot of urban districts and suburban districts, I think one of the things that I have always appreciated with urban districts is we respond. We don't hide, we don't sweep things under the rug, good, bad, or indifferent, and I think that we respond to it. We might not have all of the financial resources that some of our neighboring communities do, but I think that we are dealing with it, and we're very honest about it. I expect that we will continue that trend. I'm very happy to be part of a school district that is representative of some of the data that we show and many of the positive aspects.
Okay, great. And if I could just add to the, for the school committee, Representative Stump, several years ago, the school committee took the lead on trying to establish a school-based health center at Malden High School. I'm happy to say today, if not tomorrow, the request for proposals to select a provider who will manage this center will be issued and published. So what we'll do next is work with the superintendent, Maria Luis, who's serving point on our end, to find the provider, and once we do that, we'll begin construction, and hopefully we'll have this center up and running at the start of the school year in September. All right, so let's stay with our superintendent now to go over district updates and highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Dr. Finnegan. I appreciate that. And if I just might add on to the school-based health center, that is a critical component, I think, in providing many of the wraparound services that we can to our students. It gives access to healthcare, mental health care, and a lot of other services that otherwise are not necessarily available for our students right in the school. So we're excited about that prospect and opening that this year. Okay. As we returned from school after winter break, our staff and students came back to nice, clean buildings and actually no snow, thanks to the tireless effort of our custodial crew. The vacation was a very difficult time to get work done, because really, it was only about three days of actual work time because of the way the holidays fell and the Eves were off, but our custodial crew really ramped it up, and I want to publicly thank them for their hard work, because the buildings were sparkling clean last week and this week. We are in the process of trying to hire an assistant superintendent for Student Services. We've concluded our interviews. We are now in the vetting stage, and I hope to have an announcement by the end of the week. While we are in the interim phase with Dr. Dona's departure, we have assistant, former assistant superintendent and director of Student Services here in Malden, Mara Johnson, as well as former special education director in Somerville, is Debbie Cannell, helping out, and they have been working out very well in the two weeks that they've been here. We're doing a great amount of work in that time, so we're looking to bring somebody new on shortly. Speaking of somebody new, Sean Walsh has been appointed as the interim director of humanities for the year. I think Mr. Walsh is in the building. If anyone could stand, thank and congratulate Mr. Walsh. He's been a very valued member of English Language Arts Department and theater director, and he is now on our administrative team, so congratulations to him. He's one of our newest ones, along with Ms. Tremendosi, who's our director of nursing. I was appointed over the summer. I don't think I had the opportunity in the fall to publicly introduce her, but Ms. Patty Tremendosi is... her, but Ms. Patty Tremendosi is our director of nursing. So we have two great Malden folks here on board as leaders in our district. The Barr Foundation grant that we applied for, Dr. Chase has been point on that. We received great news a few weeks ago that the grant is paying for five of our team members to go out to San Diego for a Massachusetts learning excursion, February 6th through 8th. Five members of the team will be visiting High Tech High School, which is considered the gold standard model of project-based and technological learning across the country. Had opportunities to do webinars and Skype with them in a previous district when we were looking at a school redesign. So we have five members going out from there, directors of special education. We're not a director, we'd actually be Liz Smith from the high school, our EL director, Dr. Yvonne Endara, Dr. Doug Dias is our STEM director, Sean Walsh is our humanities director, and Natalia Brennan, our instructional technology, will all be going out there for three days of an intense learning and observation, engaging with students, teachers, and their district leaders out in San Diego. So we're really excited that the Barr Foundation presented this opportunity for us. Those areas are groups that we and the Barr Foundation feel are critical to the foundational work that they're doing. As I mentioned in the last month's report, the SEI, Sheltered English Immersion redistribution, where most of our group's students are housed at the Salemwood School, I said that we are looking at that. I enlisted the help of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They have referred us to a couple consulting groups, as well as the Massachusetts Association of Bilingual Education. Dr. Endara and I will be, and Dr. Chase will be meeting with Phyllis Hardy, their director, in the coming weeks to look at ways in which we address this so that we make sure that all of our students have the equity and access to education that they most deserve. We need to figure it out, a way to begin a thoughtful and correct, as well as coordinated, process for this across the district. And we're not necessarily sure at this stage what that will look like, but we know it is a colossal task that impacts a number of things, including the budget, potentially the collective bargain agreement and contracts, and how students are assigned, as well as just the daily logistics of school. So we're hoping to use this time this year as an analysis and planning, and then engage with stakeholders, the union, our staff, our families, and the larger, excuse me, school community, to see how we can move and make Malden more equitable for all of our students. So that's an endeavor that we're well on our way to looking at solutions. On December 18th, I had the honor and opportunity, along with our former student representative to the school committee, Baruch DeSige, we were two of the seven speakers at the Massachusetts State House for the kickoff campaign on Fund Our Future. It was sponsored by the Massachusetts Teachers Association. Along that topic of school funding, I just want to take the opportunity for tomorrow evening from 6 to 8 in the Jenkins Auditorium. We are one of the three sites in Massachusetts that will be hosting the Project Equity Forum. It's a forum that's sponsored by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. We'll have a presentation and panel discussion comprised of school superintendents. I believe the superintendents of Revere, Saugus, and Chelsea will be on the panel, municipal leaders, including the mayor of Salem, Kim Driscoll, and the city manager of Revere, and former mayor of Revere, current city manager in Chelsea, Mr. Tommy Amorcino, will be amongst the panelists, which will be moderated by Brockton Superintendent, Dr. Kathleen Smith, also finance directors as well. So this will be an informational opportunity for everybody. We're very happy to be hosting it. There'll be media coverage as well. We're encouraging everybody to show up, as I think that this is an important moment in learning how our foundational budget operates, what the impact is, and just give people straight facts going forward. Our middle school exams are underway and scheduled to be completed, excuse me, by January 2nd. As I explained in the previous meeting, these exams are an important mechanism in generating the data that will help inform and drive instruction and provide the basis for discussion during upcoming professional development sessions. The mid-year grades will not appear on the report cards or not be calculated in the student's yearly average. It's really a data collection. All six of our bargaining units, we're doing contract negotiations. I just wanted to let the public be aware of that. The teachers' union, units A, B, and C, as well as our clerical, custodian, and food service workers. We've begun some of those talks already. Update, now, our winter sports are well on their way. Of note, the boys' basketball team hosted and won the tornado holiday classic tournament by defeating both Revere High School in the first game and Snowden International School in the championship game. We did very well. Our boys' team is, are off to a good start. Just before we went out in the winter break, our local Stop &amp; Shop at 99 Charles Street provided a generous donation of meals, as well as toys, to our families in need whose children attend the Malden Public Schools. Want to publicly thank Stop &amp; Shop for being a tremendous community partner, as well as their commitment and generosity. I'd also like to thank Ms. Christy Magris, our homeless liaison coordinator, who helped facilitate this and get the food and items delivered to our most deserving and needy families. As I mentioned earlier, we have a vaping forum tomorrow. It's at Malden High, not tomorrow, I'm sorry, Wednesday, January 9th, 6 o'clock at the gallery at Malden High School. Senator Jason Lewis has been one of the sponsors of Raising That Age to 21, has been very much in the vanguard in making a commitment to our young people and keeping them safe. And Maureen Busby, who is a public health expert, she will be amongst the panelists in giving some information. Ms. Busby is a tobacco prevention specialist, as well as an e-cigarette and vaping expert. So that will be on Wednesday, January 9th, in the gallery at Malden High School. Malden, City of Malden Live Event will be next Thursday, January 17th, also at the Malden High School Gallery. That's usually streamed on Facebook Live and other social media. You can submit questions in advance to City Hall. I think that there's a link for you to do that. Also, next week, January 15th, the Boston Celtics Mobile STEM Lab comes to the Bebe School first, and in February it'll be at the Forestale School. This is a wonderful opportunity. Bebe and Forestale are two of the nine schools in the state that the lab will be going to. We're really fortunate for this. Next week, it'll be, the kickoff day is on, or tip-off, I guess, since it's basketball, January 15th. We'll have Lucky the Leprechaun, their team, their dunk team comes out, and they've got basically a tractor-trailer full of equipment, STEM stuff, that really gets our kids excited about STEM careers, specifically in the sports and entertainment venues. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for our students and staff for this, so we're very thankful for that. And lastly, the Golden Tornado fundraiser is next Thursday, the 17th, at the Kowloon on Route 1 in Saugus. Tickets are $45. 100% of the proceeds from the night go to the Student Athletes of Malden. This includes a free, full Chinese food buffet, an evening of comedy by several comedians. It's a really important and terrific fundraiser for the high schools. It helps provide substantial amount of scholarship funds to our students. The Golden Tornadoes Club has donated thousands of dollars over the years to our graduating student athletes, and we'd like to continue that very fine and noble tradition. And that concludes my report for this month.
Any questions of our superintendent? Thank you. Just a comment. I thank superintendent and to the school committee and everybody here in the audience, your hard work may be paying off because it was announced tonight that Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito will be submitting a bill along with the budget proposal the last week of January around the foundation budget. So the proof will be in the pudding, but this is a big move, I believe, to have this discussion start in January and not in May or June. So the state delegation, which has been led by State Senator Jason Lewis, who was on the commission to work on the foundation budget, believes as well that this will be the year. It's just going to be in what form. So, you know, I just wanted to let you know, we got that news tonight from the State House News Service, that was formally announced that there will be a bill that will come out with the state budget proposal from the governor's office the last week of January. So we immediately contacted officials from down the street at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to try and understand what that would mean for a city like Malden, and they believe whatever is in that separate proposal will be reflected in House One, which is the governor's proposed budget. So we should have an indication early on just what, you know, this will mean for our city, and then we'll, you know, we'll go from there. But, you know, I just want to make sure everyone here knew that. All right, let's jump to item number four, subcommittee reports and discussions. Mr. Ayavino's going to talk about space enrollment. Mr. Ayavino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our enrollment, K through, pre-K through 12, as of this past Friday, January the 4th, was 6,690 students. And that puts us at a position where we are 52 fewer students from last year at this very same time. So our enrollment and our numbers are in good shape.
Any questions of Mr. Ayavino? Hearing none, we're now at item number five, motions and resolutions. First will be Mr. Froyo on a donation of $75 from, I believe it's Luters Environmental.
Luters Environmental.
Luters Environmental, and then we'll hear from Mr. Ayavino regarding the superintendent's evaluation for the 2017-2018 school year. Let's go to Mr. Froyo first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going to read the letter that was sent out. In appreciation of all of the clients we have privileged to service in Malden, we would like to make this donation to the Malden School Department. Luters Environmental is a lawn, tree, and shrub care company specializing in science-based, environmentally sound approaches, and attentive customer service. Contributing to your school department is a way we can give back to the Malden community for considering us the company of choice. I always hope that in supporting education, other companies will join us. Please use this, or these funds in any way you deem appropriate. Signed, Michael Luters. So we have a check for $75 that they donated.
And we have to move to accept it, is that right? Okay. So I presume a motion by you, Mr. Froyo, to accept, seconded by Mr. Ayavino? Is everybody clear on what Mr. Froyo's asking of us? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Froyo. Now, Mr. Ayavino for the superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The superintendent's evaluation is mandated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as part of the education reform law passed in 1993. And it is a, it's a thorough process. It's cumbersome in terms of the amount of paperwork that it generates. As you can see, each document is several pages long. And I'm not going to go through each item because we don't have enough time this evening. However, there are four categories on which the superintendent, four standards on which the superintendent is evaluated: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And there are four categories, again, in which the superintendent would either be exemplary, proficient, needing improvement, or unsatisfactory. I think that really there should be a fifth category, which should be something along the lines of working toward exemplary. Because if you need improvement or you're unsatisfactory, you shouldn't be in the position, nor should we be hiring anybody that is in that category. I'm pleased to say that the work that Mrs. Leon did, Ms. Bordnarro, Mr. Drummy, and I, we met, there were four meetings that took place here at the senior center, and we worked individually. What we were asked to do on those areas, and the superintendent has to provide to us a list of his goals and his objectives based upon those four standards. And our job is to look at the indicators that are within each standard. I don't want to get too complicated because it is fuzzy, and to match up what the superintendent has stated that he did and what his additional goals are for the future. So all of us had agreed individually. We do this individually, and we, the superintendent has received, and I have the document here for the school record, a proficient rating for the 2017-2018 school year. And as I said, he has done an outstanding job, and we look forward to perhaps next year moving from proficient to exemplary.
And that was 4-0?
That was, that was 4-0, unanimous. I have the paperwork here, and I will submit it to Shirley, and it can be posted on the website.
Okay. And do you need a vote of the committee on that to accept, or is this just an FYI?
I just think it's an FYI, but if you want to do a vote, I have no problem with that. I'm happy to make a motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayavino, seconded by Mr. Froyo. So everybody clear on motion to accept the report, the evaluation, as stated? Any questions on that? And again, some of this material will be posted up at some point, I believe.
Right here, I can give it to you tonight.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ayavino and members of the committee.
The members of the committee, Ms. Bordnarro, Ms. Leon, Mr. Drummy, and I can thank myself as well, thank you.
Okay, so now let's get to points of personal privilege. We're at the end of our meeting. Let's go, as we typically do, left to right. Mr. Drummy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the ELC, they're starting a new ILP classroom this month. Their holiday party is the Sunday, the 20th, and their school council meeting will be on the 16th in the ELC conference room at 3:30 PM. At the Ferryway, notices are going out this Wednesday, the 9th. Box Tops for Education is starting up, and that'll be going through mid-February, so I'll let you know at the next meeting when it ends. But it's starting up just now. PTO meeting is tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, I should say, 3:30 at the library. Title One is sponsoring a game night on Thursday, and that's from 6 to 7:30 for the K through 5 classes at the cafeteria. Early dismissal, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, is at 12:30. And then on the 15th, I'm sorry, the 18th and the 25th, it's movie night. I don't have the names because the PTO meeting is tomorrow night, and they wouldn't tell me anyway. So K through 3 is going to be on the 18th, and 4 through 6 is on the 25th. That'll be in the auditorium at 6:30. And then on the 31st, the Ferryway Band Concert for grades 5 through 8 will be held at 6:00 PM. And last but not least, I just want to wish my wife a happy anniversary and happy new year, everybody. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Bordnarro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are kicking off the new year with Families Against Drugs. It's going to be Tuesday, January 22nd, at Malden High School. It's going to be in the gallery room across from the gym. It will begin at 5:00 PM till about 6:15. And it's going to be a discussion on ways to speak to your children about drugs and alcohol and the warning signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bordnarro. To my right, Mr. Ayavino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment on something that one of our local organizations did over the Christmas, before the Christmas holiday. John Froyo and I are both members of the Malden Kiwanis. And the Malden Kiwanis, every year, does an incredible job of raising probably an ex, close to, anywhere between $7,500 and $10,000 to outfit 65 to 70 families with toys. What we do is, and we work through the schools, through the guidance councils in each school, and they provide us with the names of five or six families. and they provide us with the names of five or six families from each building that are in need, and they, we try to make their Christmas as bright as we can. To see it in operation, you, I mean, you would have to see it in operation to, to understand the scope of it. The Spatafor family, Anthony's Restaurant, once again, who does so much for this community, provides the space where we load baskets, and I mean, we load baskets, in addition to fully cooked meals and gift cards to families. We don't just give the kids toys. Some of them are in need of clothing and hats, mittens, et cetera. And we deliver them. We did this year on Saturday, the 22nd, right, John? And Mr. Froyo's entire family, his daughter, and grandson, and his other son, we load, we do three or four meals each, baskets each, and we deliver them throughout the community. And all I can say is that when you get home, you're so appreciative of what we have when you see what other people don't have. It is eye-opening, and it really grabs you. And the Malden Fire Department also participated in leading us in some of the areas of the city we were not familiar with. So it was a combined effort. Yankee Pest Control, Galvin Murphy, so many people. It was the Danker family who spearheads it, Mr. Jordan Shapiro and, and his partner Danielle Henda, they do great work, and the entire Kiwanis community. So I'm proud to be part of it. I know John is, and thank you very much.
That's all. Ms. Spatafor?
Thank you. The next CPAC meeting will be held, excuse me, January 17th at 6:30 PM in the Forestale Cafeteria. The next BB School Council meeting will also be held January 23rd at 5:30 PM in the BB Conference Room. A reminder, this Friday is early release, 12:30 PM. However, there will be after-school programming for those that normally attend, as well as a gentle reminder, January 21st, no school for, in remembrance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. BB has started a recycling initiative between BB and Terrace Cycle, if I'm getting that correct, Terrace Cycle, where kids can bring in their empty, empty, or have them at snack time lunch, Entiman's little bite snack bags, and they can turn them into their teachers. We need to collect at least 900 bags to send to Terrace Cycle, and at that point, we'll be able to earn two cents per bag that can come back to the school. So send your kids in with those little muffins or brownies that I buy my kids. And lastly, I'd like to embarrass my fellow school committee member Tara Beardsley and wish her a very happy birthday.
All right. Mr. Froyo, and then we'll end with Ms. Beardsley.
Mr. Chairman, on Wednesday evening, the Linden Steam Academy Governing Board will be meeting at 5:45 in the library. All, everybody is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Froyo. Ms. Beardsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Dagelmann and Mr. Mooney for starting a robotics club at the Linden Steam Academy. Today was their first showcase of a totally free program that they put on for the kids, and it was very impressive and very appreciative to that, to their effort, and the kids' coding was amazing. The Social Emotional Subcommittee meeting is this Sunday, January 13th, at 5:00 PM at the Police Community Room. We're going to discuss extending K to 4 recess in the Malden Public Schools. Winter Fest is this Saturday at 11 at the Salemwood. Tomorrow at the Forestale, there's a PTO meeting in the library. From the 22nd of January to the 4th of February, there's Chocolate Rose fundraiser. 125, 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders will be going to their winter ball, and if anyone wants to see the winning, the Winning Letters hero, they can go to the Texas Roadhouse in Everett. And then lastly, I just wanted to put another thing out about the Warming Center at the Church of Nazarene, and I just, if there's anyone out there who is wanting to volunteer and/or needing a warm place to stay, I think you have probably more information on the city's website. Yeah, so I think that's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just build on what Ms. Beardsley said. I actually have a shift tonight. You know, there were, there were a few moments, you know, in this crazy world that we live in that you step back and appreciate things like Mr. Ayavino said, and to be able to watch, you know, this group of religious leaders come together with city officials and residents to, you know, put together a warming center that's being held at the First Church of the Nazarene on Eastern Avenue is something I'll remember for a long, long time. It's open the months of January and February, Monday through Friday. It's 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM in the morning. So, you know, the image that I'll remember is the first night, we actually had someone in there that was picking out winter coats, you know, for when he had to go back out. And, you know, just to see this spirit, you know, come together, because I know we deal sometimes with a lot of negativity. It's just so hot and warming to be able to see these religious leaders, and Karen Hayes from this center, our police chief, is out right now driving around, you know, trying to identify anybody that might need space tonight to be able to warm up. It's, it's truly something I'll remember for a long time. So thanks to everyone involved. We'll now adjourn in honor of Tara Beardsley's birthday. So who wants to make the motion to adjourn? Mr. Drummy, seconded by Mr. McConthy. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. The school committee is hereby adjourned.